Okay. Okay, we're gonna open the meeting Tuesday, March 21st, 2023, 7:00 PM on the dot. Motion to order the, motion to open the meeting?
So motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, first up. 181 School Street, in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81 S, the Town of Groveland Subdivision Rules and Regulations will hold a public meeting tonight on Tuesday, March 21st, 2023, which will begin at 7:00 PM at the Groveland Town Hall, 183 Main Street, Groveland, Mass. To hear the application of Minco Development Corp., 231 Sutton Street, Suite 1B, North Andover, Mass. Requesting approval of a seven lot preliminary subdivision plan, labeled preliminary. For the street to be named 181R, School Street, Groveland, Mass. The site is located, residential, 2 zoning district, assessors map 34, Lot 13. So I think what we're gonna do tonight is we're gonna have the engineer speak. And just remember, this is a preliminary, what they're proposing, but tonight we get a better idea in understanding what's going on. And I wish there was this many people at town meeting. And happy spring. So, we're gonna try to keep it short. We're gonna try to get, you know, feedback and comments from you guys out in the audience. But just remember, seven lots is may not what they're gonna get when they go for stormwater management. You know, they're, right now, they're coming in to talk about it. There's nothing etched in stone. This is just like, to us, a technical review meeting. So, nothing's etched in stone until we see the plan. Alright, with that?
Wait, uh, just one thing. Was that the legal notice you read?
Yeah.
Any objections to the legal notice? Show by hands. None noted?
Wally, this is just a public meeting, it's not a...
Was it posted as a hearing?
No, because per our bylaws, it's just to be posted as a public meeting, not a public hearing.
It can go either way, it depends on what they requested. But, okay, notice.
That's what our bylaws said.
I'd like to say that I never got notice. No certified package ever came to us. And from what I can tell from my neighbors, you sent it to a woman who used to live there, who died over a year ago. And we've been living there for six months. So, we did not get the package, or, you know, whatever you sent out. So it would be nice if you could send it to 1404.
Hi, Marie, I sent you an email earlier today. I don't know if you can see me. I'm Annie Schindler, I'm the town planner, who I, we spoke earlier. The applicant sent out what the, the certified abutters list, which they received from the assessing office. So there's an issue with the assessing office. It did, it was sent to that previous owner. Your, your new, the new owner just hasn't been addressed, or hasn't been updated.
Is there a way to get a copy of it, though?
Yeah, absolutely. I can, I sent you an email with, the email I sent had the application as a part, as an attachment.
Okay, so that's the only thing that was in the certificate, the certified package?
The only thing that people received in the mail is what the chairman just read, stating that this public hearing would be happening. So that's the only thing that was within the letter that your neighbors received.
And also, I would add, the folks on Zoom tonight, if you could just raise your hands, we'll look over, and we'll call you accordingly.
Okay, we see a hand there. Two hands.
Do we wanna start off with letting the engineer present what we're going through?
Right, we're gonna let the engineer...
We have a challenge to the notice, so, so far. Have you got this corrected yet?
Uh, so, is this on? Okay, yeah, so we, we did receive a return to sender on the certified abutters list. And again, we sent them out based on the certified abutters list, and we just got notice today that she did not receive that notice.
Okay, who's, any members of your team in the audience here taking this stuff down? Or you writing everything down?
Uh, I'm aware of this.
Okay.
And they're on Zoom as well.
What's that?
Members from the applicant team are on Zoom as well, I know.
Oh, okay.
Letitia.
And that would be an assessor's problem.
And it would be, it would be the assessor's problem.
Yeah, but then it turns out to be the applicant's problem, just now that we know of it, just to make sure they got it, that's all. That was all my question, just make sure you get it out to her.
Yes, of course.
So if you can introduce yourself?
Yep, my name's Will Schudter from the Moore and Cameron Group, 66 Elm Street, here on behalf of Minco Development for the preliminary subdivision at 181R School Street. Uh, just, I'll run through kind of the site, the existing conditions first, and then we'll jump into what we're proposing. So, existing conditions, it's basically an...
Excuse me one second.
You guys have all been presenting what he's showing you right now?
No, we're getting, this is our presentation as well.
It needs to be on camera.
You can turn that. Or you can get a copy in the back.
You need it facing this way, right?
Well, I have a camera facing it, yeah.
Okay.
Chris, we can pass around that extra set of plans.
So, so the board needs to be on the camera?
Okay, yeah, no, I didn't want to get it or seeing this.
But we, we have an extra set, we can pass around. Alright, so the existing site's about 5.6 acres, mostly undeveloped. There's a small clearing kind of in the front where the trees have kind of been taken down over the years, and the rest of the site is mostly wooded. The grades generally slope from School Street down to the rear of the lot. There's about a 30-foot grade change from the start at School Street down to the rear. We did file an RDA with the Conservation Commission previously to get a determination, and they determined there's no resource areas on the site in their jurisdiction. So that's kind of a quick rundown of the existing conditions. So, just a little background. Initially, this project was thought that the developer was thinking about putting in a 40B development with multifamily housing. However, after discussions with the town and kind of some abutter feedback, they've decided to go and present this seven-lot subdivision. So, all single-family lots conforming to all dimensional regulations of the zoning bylaw. That we have, everything is in compliance with lot development regulations. The road is basically designed to come off School Street and slope down. It's about a 5% slope preliminary without fully engineering the site. And that's basically coming off School Street for a certain distance, and then basically going right back down. More or less trying to follow the existing contours to limit the cut fills on the site. There'll be sidewalk kind of proposed on one side of the street going up, and it's a cul-de-sac with a island in the middle. Stormwater is all right now proposed to be contained kind of in the end cul-de-sac. And we haven't fully engineered anything, but everything will be in full compliance with the mass stormwater regulations. And due to the topography of the site, the initial design that we're anticipating is basically underground storage, infiltrating, capturing, keeping everything on-site as best we can. Of course, once we get into design, we'll have to refine everything, but that's the preliminary design for the stormwater. We do have a couple variants that we are requesting for this development. The first one is gonna be the intersection distance for the roadways.
Waivers, not variances. Please, we've had a couple questions already, they're not variances.
Yes, no variances, so a waiver, sorry, thank you. So a waiver for the intersection, or between the roads on the same side. We believe that, we read in the regulations, we think it's supposed to be 400. We're requesting a 300-foot. And that's kind of in the character of the neighborhood. There's other roads out there that are similar. About 300 to 250 feet on closest lots out there, or roads out there. And to Georgia Street, about 300 feet. Abbott to Carlita, 320 feet. And Doris to Wilbert is about 220 feet. Those are kind of the close neighborhoods around this area. We're also looking for a reduction in the K-value. That's a design standard, it's a constant when you're doing roadway designs. It takes into account the gradient of the road. We're basically asking for a waiver to match the ASHTO regulations. So that reduction is still gonna be in conformance with ASHTO design standards that we've typically used for all roadways. And the third waiver would be for the curbing. We're gonna request that we can use Cape Cod berm for the development for the majority of it. We would have granite curbs kind of just at the intersection of the roads, and then we would have bituminous berm going throughout the rest of the property. The K-value, the other thing to note with that, basically, a flatter crest is a higher K-value. So that kind of takes that, that curve and pushes it out further, kind of flattens the area based on what we have. But we're, we would be designing for the ASHTO 30 mile an hour design speed. And that's kind of the gist of the project. And if you guys have any questions, we're gonna be looking for a positive outcome to this meeting and answer any questions that you may have.
So I, I have a lot, was that Lot 1? Lot 1 that abuts, what's that? Step out, Lot 44, um, map 34, Lot 12. What is that distance? At the roadway and at the corner of their lot, upper?
You could say right, right with the lot, kiss of the...
It, it's only a couple feet, and that was kind of governed by our design of the offset requirements. But, the right-of-way would only be a couple feet, the edge of pavement would be about 20 feet or so.
So the problem I see with that, so you're gonna put a lawnmower in that, you're gonna be trespassing.
Right, I mean, we haven't got fully to that.
So I think right now, we're going forward with a dimensional change coming to the bylaw soon. And this is the stuff we're trying to get rid of, these rat tails.
Alright.
Just so you know.
And we have the same problem up here with Lot 3 as well.
Lot 3 as well.
Right around the end of the cul-de-sac on the left-hand side.
Would there be a way that we don't have this rat tail on 1, 6? As a design, and we still don't know soil testing yet?
We haven't done any actual soil testing until, obviously, if we're gonna move forward, we'll go out there, but we've taken a look and did some research, and we believe there's fairly good soils out there, and we're not anticipating encountering anything that's not...
So you think you can capture the whole stormwater in the cul-de-sac?
Yeah, that, the idea so far is basically to have underground, an underground system to capture the whole roadway and the lot development. Everything would kind of, it would be multiple steps to the lot developments, but everything would be contained more or less on-site.
In the 100-year storm, the 50-year storm?
For the 100-year storm, yep, good, full compliance with Mass. Stormwater Handbook.
Any other board members?
Yeah, I see dimensional problems with Lot 1, 2, possible, yes, 3.
6.
6.
5, 6, and 7. Every single one of these things have dimensional problems that I can see coming right onto that. Can I ask a question? Why did you submit this as a preliminary opinion with, where, instead of a conceptual? Which would have been proper protocol for this, because we could have sent it out to our engineer review? Because this thing is pretty incomplete for a subdivision, a preliminary plan.
Uh, I, I was under the impression that it's in, we followed the regulations and the subdivision regulations.
Right, did you see the regulations for the conceptual plan? Submital? Because that's what this looks like, where you have so many things that are incomplete on this, and you would've got a quick review back. I think the fee is like $500.
What you mean when you say it's incomplete? We believe that we are fully compliant with dimensional regulations for zoning in lots.
I don't think you read the regs. We also got problems with fire hydrant locations from, from the fire chief, water and sewer. You wanna put one hydrant, they're putting both. I mean, you got a lot of stuff missing on this. This is a perfect conceptual plan, because it's just a basic, you know, sheet with some topo on it, but not a preliminary plan, this is not...
Yeah, we, we did receive some public, or comments from some public officials, and they, we thought they were very minor and easily accomplished, that we can address those comments with a definitive subdivision.
We just got four more, so add that to the list. But I don't think this plan is, is complete for a standard preliminary, but it is as a conceptual, I agree with that. This is what we like to see, first look on that. But anyway, that's my input at the moment.
Jason?
What is the road length?
The right, the right-of-way or the pavement width?
Pavement length.
The length, the length of the road.
The length, it's about 550 feet, but within 5, 6, I think it was.
Is this about 180 feet wide on this lot? Is there, or is it, am I missing a dimension here?
So it's gotta, it's gotta be at least the minimum of 50 feet.
The, the right-of-ways, the right-of-way itself is 50 feet. The pavement width would be the 24 for a minor roadway.
And I don't know about you guys, but I'm not really, Cape Cod berm gets destroyed.
Yeah, no, it's gonna be, yeah, we, we got rid of that except certain, that's why it's, yeah, a long time ago. So this, the total lot frontage is what?
150 is the minimum for frontage on a lot.
No, no, we got that. What actually do you have here, I'm trying, I'm seeing two different dimensions.
I don't know off the top of my head.
Do you have a scale?
I, if I had a calculator, I would be able to add them.
No, 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 the...
We don't have a scale on the plan.
The frontage on...
Yeah, the scale, it's 40 foot, these are 40, 40 scales.
So the total frontage on 97?
Oh, on, on School Street is 102, 170 feet.
170 feet, so, okay.
Roughly.
There's not a curb cut there already, right? There's a curb cut towards this lot to the right, an access point?
Correct.
But there's not a curb cut right now on School Street, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
But I believe there was also stubs for utilities that were set there for the development at a future time, for just probably a single family is my guess. But they, this lot wasn't created, it was there when they redid some of the utilities out in the front.
Because if the utilities aren't there, technically, you can't open that road for how long?
I'm, I'll have to double-check with the highway superintendent, because that's his jurisdiction. But I believe the road was repaved four years ago. You folks might know better than I would, was it about four years ago?
It was minimum five years before you could open up that roadway again. It wasn't paved, it was all redone.
Exactly.
You know?
So there is, there is that. But again, that is the highway superintendent's jurisdiction.
So if the stubs aren't there, you know, you, you gotta wait?
Yep, fully understood, right. I mean, we still have the process to go through for a definitive subdivision, so we're still, still quite a ways away, this is just the...
Water and sewer wants a triple gate cut into School Street?
Yep, yep, that's standard, we would have an 8-inch water main.
They're gonna be cutting something in anyway.
Yep, so we, I, that was one of the comments, just how, how to connect the actual water main to the existing main, and that's kind of a standard that...
They want a triple gate all with shut-offs?
That's what it says. Coming in, there's a bunch of other stuff, too. Let me see. 200 KVA transformer platforms, too, from electric.
And what's that, a year plus weight?
Uh, I think it was 52 to 80-something weeks.
Yeah, 52 to 80.
And, but, they, they also mentioned that they would require a deposit, a third deposit, obviously...
Probably 25,000 bucks, too, right?
It, this is something, obviously, if the project moved forward, we would start kind of pursuing those items. But at this preliminary stage, we're not gonna be putting down money for transformers.
Did, um, did this go to TEC yet?
No.
For the review?
No, not yet.
No, because it's not, it's just a preliminary, Wally?
I see it's a preliminary filing, but I, I'm still a little concerned that there's a lot of stuff that should've been worked out on a preliminary stage, but this is a perfect conceptual plan that doesn't need any changes.
So we didn't do, you didn't do a TRC meeting with the town, did you? With Sam, the golden inspector?
I'm not sure who we met with, I know we met with the planning department to review this a couple weeks ago, before we filed.
Andy, was there a TRC meeting done, like typically?
So we didn't do a traditional TRC meeting where we invite a representative from every board.
Okay.
The meeting that we had a few weeks ago on Zoom was more of a pre-application filing meeting, essentially.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
I'd like to, um, put a suggestion out. You can either possibly retract the preliminary, but submit this exact plan, no changes, to a conceptual, fees $500, goes out to our engineer, and get some feedback from engineering before you jump into a full detailed preliminary and a definitive, because it really comes back, it's the best bang for the buck that we have here on planning. And you'd get all the input coming in for a cursory view. It'll save you a lot of money and a lot of time. We start jumping into preliminaries, you could be up to eight revisions on this thing from what I see so far, because we don't have enough data, and you don't either. So, you know, you're the applicant, we, we have a couple of options we can do, but I think that's a really good thing, we can just submit it as-is, as a conceptual review, and then just pay the fee, and it goes off to CEC, and then wait for that to come back in them, and then you can file the preliminary with the updated stuff that's gonna be on that. And it'll be a much more workable plan for us, and also for the, for the residents, because there's a lot of things you're missing.
Wally, I'm, well, they can do it through their engineering department and then go for peer review, I mean, that's...
Well, it depends on what they wanna do, but, um, it depends on what they're filing, because we're doing, this is just a preliminary submission work meeting, is that what this is?
So, um, I'll note for the conceptual plan, the fee is $500, but that doesn't go towards engineering, that's just the filing fee.
No engineering whatsoever, correct.
That's, but that wouldn't go to engineering, they would have to pay an additional engineering fee on top of that, for the conceptual.
Yeah, you're probably talking another 3,500 bucks.
Still better than what we got right here.
Well, I mean, they just, I think they come in for feedback, I think.
Yeah, so the reason that we filed the preliminary is basically to get feedback from you guys. Obviously, if we're gonna move forward with a definitive or before that step, we will fully engineer the site and be in full compliance with the subdivision rules and regulations. And I think at that point, we would wanna be engaged with the peer review, because, as you know, these will get a lot more detailed, and there'll be a lot more information, and we'll go through and make sure everything and all these other comments from the town officials are all gonna be addressed during the definitive stage. So, the intent was, we, we kind of brought this a little bit further in our opinion than a conceptual phase, this is, we thought we kind of complied to the preliminary requirements. We went through and had everything on, on our plans for what we need for the preliminary and discussion items, and to get feedback from you guys. And then, if we get positive feedback, that's when we would start working on fully engineering the site, doing full subdivision plans, definitive subdivision plans.
Okay, so, if I may?
Go ahead.
I'm not an engineer, and I don't usually profess this, but I like to see what a six-lot subdivision would be. That way, you can drop these rat tails, you know, satisfy us that way with the process. I think we should also open up a public comment and see what the...
Oh yeah, we gotta do that. But I'm a little confused on the filing, still, on that. So you filed the preliminary plan, okay? And so if you wanna get through the preliminary process, this is our first public hearing, okay? So we gotta submit this over to TEC for engineering either way, okay? And then, obviously, continue the hearing as these plans come in, go in then. Or you can drop to the conceptual, do that, and pay the engineering fee, we'll talk about that later, with, what that is. And then come back in with a tuned-up preliminary plan with all the comments from the conceptual on it, and then bring that forward. Or, if you wanna, it's your, it's your application. If you wanna go through with the full preliminary plan, be nice to know, and then we'll give you, at the end of the meeting, the engineering review, and then we'll continue the hearings, but we're gonna get all's public input, too. So what was your plan?
So we, we came in just to kind of get feedback, I guess the big thing is the waivers, that we were requesting to get feedback on that, and then any, I guess, general items, not necessarily the filing, how we filed. I guess we were thinking that preliminary plan, this is again, preliminary, instead of jumping straight into a definitive subdivision, we wanted to get feedback from you guys, and then we would be hopefully moving forward with a definitive, doing a full engineering.
Yeah, see, typically, we do the conceptual, you get the feedback, you make the preliminary plan, we go through the preliminary process, and then by the time we get to the, done with the preliminary process, you know, take whatever time it takes you, the guys, to put everything together, and then it jumps to the definitive, and you have usually very few changes by then, because you've already met with all these other officials and during the preliminary process.
At the time of the filing, when you start coming in with a plan, we can discuss the waivers, then we're not gonna take a vote, I think, as the board on waivers tonight, because it's really the preliminary plan.
Yeah, I completely understand, I guess it was just a fail, and whether... We're trying to fill out if this is a feasible project before jumping into fully engineering it, so...
So you're using the board as a feasibility study?
I wouldn't say that, but, okay.
I still recommend the conceptual, but it's, it's your application, whatever you wanna do with it. We're gonna send it out for engineering anyway, so...
Well, I'm not gonna send it out for engineering until they come in with...
Oh, I get to see what they're gonna do with it.
So I'd like to, at this time, if it's alright with the board, open this for public comment. So when you grab a microphone, state your name, your address, and we'd like to keep this short, because there's a pretty big bunch here. So, up first?
Everyone, please wait for the microphone before you start speaking.
Right behind you.
Oh, thank you. Hi, my name is Maureen Doherty, 801. Sorry, can you speak up? My name is Maureen Doherty, 801, what's a rat tail?
So, so if you see that, so...
Good question.
The rat tail is this section of the lot here, you can see the main lot for this lot is right here, and then it comes down all the way here, this very skinny strip, that's what we call a rat tail.
Excuse me! I'm sorry, I'm on Zoom, and I cannot hear the people in the audience. I raised my hand about five minutes ago, and you'll see it's still raised, plus I sent in a chat comment. Nobody's looking at us out here. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so...
Folks, hey, folks. We're, we're having issues with people hearing, so if we could please keep it down?
So is that explained? Okay, anybody else? Gentlemen in the back? You're gonna need it.
Also, people can hear me over here, how you doing?
Hi, how you guys doing? Um, I'm Derek DeVoe, 181 School Street, and I'm the one that is right here, which I had a concern. This is me. Obviously, this rat tail, where they're connecting to my lot here, obviously runoff, right? Where this water is going, you're cutting down all these trees next to my house, and this is definitely gonna cause probably a water problem in this area, which I don't have right now, but it is a low spot. And I think it's gonna create a little problems for me in this area, in this part of my lot here. And they're getting really close to me here on the street.
That, that's, you know, that's the part I'm, I'm coming...
You know, I don't really like that so much, so, you know, just a few suggestions. Like you said, I, I like what you said, you know? You're trying to cram in seven houses here, obviously a money thing, right? They wanna make their money, so they're trying to really be manipulative here, and trying to get away with these kind of lots. So, we think, you know, five, you know, six would probably be a little more reasonable for the area, you know what I mean? But...
Zero.
Zero. But, you know, everybody, you know, they, they own the land, but you gotta do the right thing about the people.
So I will, I will say this...
To me, that's just my opinion, that's all.
So I will say this.
Thank you.
We have rules and bylaws and regulations. If they check the boxes and it passes, it's probably going to happen. The only way you can get rid of these things is when the parcel comes up, buy them. Because the people of Whitestone Village, I remember when that was, trees and forest, and you guys got a place to live, right? So... Gentleman with his hand up? Oh, wait, wait one second?
Oh, okay, sorry.
My name's Richard Wallace, I'm at 405 Whitestone Village. I do have concerns from our condo complex, but I forget the gentleman's name at 181. I concur with him. Five units is more than enough, how mu, how much acreage is there, 4, 4.5?
That's 5.6.
Yeah, five, five units is enough if it goes through. But why do they have to be so close to his house? It scraped, almost scraped the paint off his house, when they could push it over to the right.
Again, there's bylaws in the town.
No, but... There may be bylaws, there's such a thing as being a good neighbor.
How many, how many units are in Whitestone? I mean, they could've done half.
That's not the issue tonight, that's not the issue. The issue is this one.
Well, let the engineers figure that out.
I just want, yeah.
Point well taken.
Good neighbors.
Go along with it.
Thank you. We have a comment down front, please?
I just have, Tanny Shim, and I live at Whitestone Village, Diane Circle. Does that still say 305 Diane Circle that it abuts? Because that would be coming right into the complex. I live at 202, right at the front, 203. And it should be 1, because that's where it, it does not, 305. That would, there's like another, it's only, it's, it's closer to Center Street.
We'll look at, we use some of the town records.
Okay, because that should be, it should be one...
Do you use the GSI, GIS map?
Yeah, because if they did do that, they'd be building right in Whitestone Village. So, that's a big...
Okay, what is it, what do you have listed there? Okay, what do you have listed there?
They have 305.
They have 305.
Yeah, it's, it should be one.
Well, is the G I S map isn't really a hundred percent.
Okay. There's another note for you.
Any, anybody else have a comment?
Hi, Kathy Chadwick from 1303 Alyssa Drive. I have a question about water. I was wondering if there's a hydrology report that's going to be done or has been done for the runoff. Well, you, you mentioned the water storage at the end of the cul-de-sac. That kind of abuts where we are on Alyssa Drive. So we're concerned, we have some water issues already with a high water table. So, is there going to be a hydrology report done to make, to mitigate, if, if needed, any damage of runoff to Whitestone on Alyssa Drive?
Yeah, so if we move forward, when we get into the engineering of the full subdivision, it'll be in full compliance, which includes stormwater that's regulated for the state. So it'll be in full compliance with the state regulations.
So, I will, I'll say this, anything that's proposed, water coming from the roof, the gutters, anything has to infiltrate on this site, it can't go anywhere else. That's part of the stormwater management. That's a state regulation. He'll have to do a hydro cad and comply.
Yeah, okay.
So they'll run, I don't know if his firm has a hydro cad, or do you send it out?
Nope, no, we'll do full engineered analysis, a whole hydrology analysis for stormwater.
Wait, just a, a question as a, somebody who is concerned. So, when you mentioned water storage, is that like a detention basin or the underground?
At this time, I mean preliminary, again, everything, nothing's kind of fully engineered, but they have, they're basically underground storage chambers. So, you don't see a detention basin necessarily. The water's kind of, gets captured and goes underground and then it infiltrates over a period of time. So, it's all captured and it infiltrates over a 24 hours, a 74 hour period.
So it's a geotech infiltrator?
Yeah.
So, it's...
Well, we have, we have retention and detention basins at Whitestone that do a good job, especially with this winter. I'm not opposed to that, I just want to make sure that we don't have damage to the adjoining buildings, you know, right, because you're abutting. It looks like pretty tight to Alyssa Drive. I have a lot of questions, but that, that, I'll give it up right now.
Owen?
More questions?
Just a note, we recommend that if anyone in here, because you're going to leave here and you go, "I should have asked that question," okay? Address it to the board, all your questions, and especially when it comes to some of this engineering stuff. And we will get that sent over to our engineers to make sure your questions are answered in the way that, that you had asked them. Some, some of you are going to have the same questions. Annie, I see your hand up?
Send it to my email, which was on the letter you should have received, but if not, it's on the town website, all over the place. Economic Development Department, my phone number, my email are there, Planning Board website. I do conservation and zoning too, so you'll be able to find me all over the place. My name's Annie Schindler. If you have any questions after this hearing, feel free to give me a call, email. I'll make sure I communicate it with the board, the applicant, and whatever peer review engineer we end up choosing if they choose to go through, you know?
So, we can, I'm sorry, we can present our questions directly to you and you'll...
Correct.
And I'll forward it along, yeah.
You can, you can address them here and you can address them in writing, which we recommend, so we can send them out for review.
Yep.
Besides water issues.
Understandable.
I don't want to hog the mic.
I will say, does anybody on Zoom have a question, so we don't forget them?
No.
Any hands up on Zoom?
I don't see any, no.
Don't see any.
Okay.
Thank you.
Your name?
My name is Richard Fitzgerald, I live at 180 School Street, across from this development, proposed development. And my question is, is this going to be developed for seven buildable lots? And then it will be up to the purchaser of each lot to build what they want? Or are they going to, once, if they develop this the way they want to, are they going to build seven houses they've designed?
Which plan?
So is Minicucci going to do, is he proposing to build and, or sell?
We don't know at this point. I mean, that's, it's down the line.
Well, and I will say, I will say as a board, that's not in our realm. We're to make sure that the lots comply with our zoning, stormwater management, road dimensions. So what the builder does with his own lot, we can't hold their feet to the fire to build and to sell.
Yeah, we can just ask the question, that's all. See if you can come up with an answer.
Who is the builder?
Who's the builder?
The applicant, the applicant is Lou Minicucci, am I correct?
Minko Corp.
Minko.
So there will be no limitations on size of the struc- size of each structure? Just according to town laws in terms of...
Well, whatever the setback, you know, whatever the setback regs are.
Okay.
And this is town sewerage, so you could get four or five bedrooms out of this.
So I have a lovely little spiel that you're going to have to listen to, so...
Please state your name.
Jessica Masrow for Ann Street, so we're one of the abutting to this. I do have large concerns about the water and the water storage because when it does rain, there is a steep incline from where this lot is to where our homes are. And when it rains, we do have quite a lot of water that is already coming through. I just wanted to say, it's obviously in quite rough stages, so I won't get to a lot of these points because it will be wasteful. But one of the prominent reasons we sold our home in Beverly three years ago and moved to Groveland was because Beverly is being over-commercialized and overdeveloped and is what this plan looks like to a T. So one of the reasons we started and are growing our family in Groveland is to have that square footage, to thrive in our house and our yard and enjoy what Groveland has to offer. And with a plan that looks like this, not only does that impact us, but whoever buys these lots and lives here does not have the front yard or the backyard to thrive as a family. So just from a heartfelt standpoint, this to me isn't what Groveland is all about and what it looks like and the aesthetic of Groveland. And I think that's my largest concern at the moment.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Jeff Maniscalco, I live at 6 Ann Street, right next to Jess and Steve. Like she said, my, our backyards that are butts up to 181, it's like a 30-foot drop at a very steep incline and we do get a lot of water. Even with French drains that we both have, all that stuff, we still get water in the basement, it happens. But my question is, this probably isn't for you guys, it's probably more for the town, but with all these developing cul-de-sacs everywhere, Center Street, Main Street, the big one they're putting across from Chesterton, right? How many units are going there?
192.
192.
192, figure a four family, four, four, a four-person family per that, 2,000 people. The town needs a better plan for police, fire, better resources. We still have a full-time fire department, a, a part-time fire department, I'm sorry. But that's something you guys...
I think we have a full-time fire department now.
Yeah, during the day, right? They go home at 5, don't they? That's part-time to me, all right? There's, there needs to be a plan for resources like that and that's something you guys should consider. And I know it's probably not on you guys.
It's not up.
I understand, but you're adding a lot more people here and you're, it's taxing the resources. Just what's all I want to say.
The, the...
In the schools.
Building that you...
You're overcrowding the schools, they're already overcrowded.
The, the building that you're referring to...
Special ed department's falling apart because they don't, can't hire enough teachers.
Well, again, that's...
The, the building that you're referring to is, is what's called special permit. In the special permit process, the Board of Selectmen shall, not maybe, shall, include the fire department, the police department, impact on the schools, roads, and anything else that goes in there. Your points are well taken, okay? Write those down and send that over to the Board of Selectmen, who actually has the bailing work on that. But they have to do it.
Yeah, I know, I know that, but it's something to think about.
Now, in our, no, I agree with you. Hey, I did the max build-out study, I've been here 30 years. I did the max build-out study on this, in all the land in town. And that was one of the areas and the Center Street project was one of the other areas, okay? So we could actually see what the impact was going to be and we're doing another one now. That'll be coming out, but you're absolutely correct. The other point that I was going to make to your comments, and well taken, that's called the violation of the spirit and intent of zoning. Okay, that's the, the catchphrase that goes with that. Yeah, the spirit and intent of zoning. So we don't, we don't maximize lots, but we do have rules and regs. And if this does, just what Brad said, if this meets the regulation, it flies. But that doesn't mean you over-populate the density required or you just squeeze everything in there, so it's miserable. Because our job, we work for you folks, the residents of Groveland, we don't work for them, okay? And we also work for the future residents of Groveland, so we got to keep an eye on this. That's why we're on Planning Board, because we plan. It's a future plan. So, they got some work to do in that, but those are the two things. And we hear this a lot during the hearings, this is why we bring you folks in, because the water issue, that's very important, I'm glad you brought that up. He can hear it, we're going to be looking into it, stormwater management's going to carry it. And sometimes, the locals know more about this than the engineers will. And if we have to go stand out in rainstorms, we do it. That's just part of it, so thank you.
Anybody else?
Steve Masrow, Justice husband at 4 Ann Street. Just being here at the, the, the meeting enlightened me to another thing that I did want to make a point of was, school street's already a very busy road, especially during rush hour. If you're adding another street to that busy road, there's already a number of accidents that happen outside my house on school street. And to add another road for people to turn in and out of that's very close to Ann, Georgia, and the abutting streets across school, I think you're just adding more, more potential damage and trouble.
Yeah, we're doing a traffic study on this one just because of the road. I forget what the traffic count is on, on school street, but it's substantial. Same with Salem Street, actually, it would surprise you how many cars go.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's...
I live at 182 School Street and Ann Street faces my house. It's difficult to get into my house, to into my driveway, there's so much traffic already.
Are you, please use the microphone, I'm sorry, people at home can't hear you if you don't use it. The microphone, please?
Hi, my name is Mary Provencial, I live at 182 School Street, right across the street from Ann Street. It takes me sometimes, no exaggeration, five to 10 minutes to get in my driveway because there's so much traffic. I have to put my blinkers on, plus my emergency blinkers too, to get into the school, in my driveway because of the traffic.
Great point, well taken. I think up front, Casey, uh...
Just as an addition to, just as an addition to that, now that they have the new sidewalk on opposite street from us, there was a time when you're trying to get into your driveway, the cars went around you, now they're stopping behind you and there's, you know, sometimes the people behind you are not the most patient in terms of that and that's, you know, possible accident waiting to happen.
I think we got a comment up front.
I think we have a comment up front.
Yeah, my name is Keith Koalak, 180 School Street. I can skip you the hydrology report because I know the groundwater, ground table's about 14 feet down. And that's why this woman here is going to have a water problem when you start piling up water, sitting in the back of that project. And the other thing I'm not too thrilled about is the creative engineering with these two lots that have rat tails. I mean, what the hell is this?
No, point well taken.
What is that? Did you design this? Because you get an A for a creative designer, really. Then this one? I mean, and then this guy, what's he going to have for a backyard? Nothing. Nothing. They're going to move in there, it's not going to be a tree there, it's going to be all green. And then one day they're going to say, geez, I'm going to go out and play in my yard or have my kids out in the yard, they don't even have a yard. That's crazy. I would invite any one of you guys, anytime you want, come, walk down Ann Street, come through our yard. I've been down there. I'm talking to the board, you can come too. That wa- I, I know what the water is, I helped a woman down there one day. I'll back out to the hill, we have no yard, it's a hill.
Are there any other comments?
Someone on Zoom?
Well...
Go ahead.
Marie on Zoom?
Um, yes, kind of going along with both water and just noise and unsightliness. I'd like to know if there's going to be a buffer of trees that are left undisturbed around the development? So that the people right next door don't have to, to look at the development or whatever, but just leaving a buffer of maybe 20 feet of the trees that are there undisturbed? Keep the soil retained and just seems like a better thing for conservation?
I don't think there's any conservation on the lot, so I think that would be a design, you know, that would be points for the design team, are you going to leave a buffer? If the soils are so good and stormwater management isn't going to be a problem and you're not going to need ponds in the back and it's a, it sounds like if you put a pond in the back of a lot, you know, five, six or seven, you're going to have problems.
Again, yeah, once we get into the full engineering, of course, we would love to leave a buffer if possible, but we haven't fully engineered the site, we haven't graded out lots and designed house lots yet.
Buffer zones are, we do look at those.
We do definitely look at buffers.
Yeah, yes, to answer your question, Marie.
Okay, thank you.
You have another question on Zoom?
Yep.
Hello, Ann Powers, excuse me, Diane Circle. I'm a new resident in Whitestone and my concern is the timing of construction. Number one, all of this has to be cleared. Number two, you know, I don't care whether you're pouring concrete or whether you're, whatever you're doing, taking down trees. How long is this project expected to take?
Uh, so, there's still a permitting process that will probably be roughly a year or so.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm, I'm talking about construction.
And then, once you get into construction, I mean, it's probably a year or two and depends on how they divide this, are they going to build houses right away? Or are they going to do one at a time? Are they going to go in and do them all? We, we don't know that answer at this time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anybody else? We haven't heard from the woman in the purple.
Hi, my name is Michelle Frost and I live at 600...
I think the microphone is off, maybe?
Is the green light on?
We're looking for a green light.
Is it on?
Nope.
The green light was on. My name is Michelle Frost and I live at 603 Alyssa Drive. And so when we were talking about detention tanks and it eventually infiltrates the soil, our whole backyard, oh, sorry, can't hear. Our whole backyard is a, a pool. I went out there the other day and I was in water up over my ankles. So that's a big concern to a lot of people in Whitestone. And my other question is, whatever happened to natural habitats? We have a lot of wild animals and there's a whole fox den up in that area. It's kind of sad to see all of that happen.
So I can answer that one, I think, for the species, it depends if they're endangered, so there's a...
Hi, sorry, I can, I'm also the Conservation Agent for the Town of Groveland, so I looked at it from that perspective as well. As Will mentioned, there were no wetlands on the site. The other thing I look at as the Conservation Agent is whether or not any of the property is listed as rare or endangered habitat species and none of it is. So they would not have to go through the requirements through, or the, sorry, the permitting process through the state because it is not currently listed under any of their habitats, you know, rare endangered species. And none of the areas around it are either.
Thank you.
I did the due diligence on it already.
Thank you, Annie. And gentleman over there, did you want to?
I don't know which one, Maureen.
Hi, my name's Bill Casey, I'm at 408... 402 Diane Circle. My concern, basically I'm asking the question of three or four of all of the ladies that are not here tonight. Their concern about when the project gets started.
You have to hold the mic up. When the project gets started.
Are the trucks going to use our, our roadways to... No.
No, they've got to enter their own road, they can't use any other road.
And the other reason why this place is so packed is, I've been here eight years, so, five or six of the years, were really good years. The last couple of years, it's been eight million dollar roof job, a road to nowhere that goes behind us after all the bird lovers and everything, and what else do they fix? Anyway, it's been a project after another, and now this thing's coming. I figured it was coming anyway, because all I ever saw was like chain links that do not trespass, I knew somebody had an edge on the land, but anyway, other than that, it's a pretty good time.
No, we're still here.
We like it too.
Anybody else for a public comment? Yeah, I think we'll close the, uh, this... I think we'll close the public comment right now.
Oh, yeah.
So, for tonight, we'll close the public comment, and bring it back to the board. Oh, you'll be sliding in, okay, go ahead.
I'll talk, we're right here. Hi, okay, do we know if the lots are going to be sold off individually, or if the develop, one developer is going to do the whole project? Do we know that yet?
I think we already, somebody already asked that question.
And I, and I missed it, because somebody was asking me something.
They've not determined yet.
What?
It's not determined yet, as a board, we can't dictate what they do with the lots.
Okay. Well, that kind of sums up.
Okay, so we're going to close the public, unless there's any more? Make sure the Zoom folks, okay? We're going back to the board.
I think we have one more.
One more.
Hi, I'm Diane Driscoll from Whitestone Village, Alyssa Drive. I want to know how far it is from Whitestone Village property line. Nobody's addressed that yet, only, or I missed it, I'd like to know that.
That's right, I think you're in Abuta.
The property abuts that property, so, so that would be lots.
How many feet are you talking?
Do, do you mean the road, the roadway, or?
This lot, this border right here?
Correct.
This is Whitestone.
Yep, so it, it abuts Whitestone.
I know, how many feet from the, it's just literally up against our property.
Yeah, Annie, take it.
So, sorry, who asked the question?
Was that, that going in the rocking chair?
So...
Couple things, can I just ask?
Yep, so you asked how, so lot lines touch, so there's no technical buffer between that property and Whitestone, because lot lines, they, they touch, so you share a lot line. The buffer comes within our table of dimensional requirements, so depending on how you look at a lot, there's a side yard setback, front yard setback, backyard setback, so depending on where you are in town, you can't put anything within those side backs that, like, you know, requires a building permit. So, in most areas, like a side yard setback in town is about 15 feet normally, so that's from the property line, so if this is Whitestone, this is 181R school street, it would be 15 feet from either side, so it would be 30 feet. If, is that making sense? It's hard to, the lot line you share, there's no buffer between lot lines.
I got you, and it concerns me greatly. The people that live at Whitestone Village, I mean, really, we pay for everything, our taxes are sky high, the town does well by us, I have to say, and all these little projects that are coming around, and this one especially concerns me. We're very low when we're talking about water, yes, and I just think the planning board should really consider some of these issues and why everybody's here tonight. Thank you.
Okay.
I think we're going to consider all of them, so what's...
I would say yes.
Yeah, so motion?
All right, we're going to, motion to close the public meeting.
Thank you.
Are we going to continue, though? Close the public comment for tonight?
For tonight.
And then...
We would request to continue, so I can talk to our applicant.
Continue, so we need to...
You're going to request to continue, unless we have any more comment from our board tonight, and I think we've made our points.
Yeah, we beat that up, so we're going to continue the hearing, they're going to come in with stuff.
All right. I will second the motion to close the public comment.
All in favor for the public comment?
Aye.
Aye.
Eighteenth, somewhere around there.
Uh, sorry, one second, I have to pull up my calendar. Thank you, sorry, I'm just pulling up my calendar. So, our next scheduled meeting is April 4th, is the next scheduled meeting, you can choose to continue to that, our meeting after that would be April 18th. So, I assume you would, I, you would either want the 4th or the 18th.
At this time, yeah, we'll continue to the 4th, so we can just discuss this with our applicant.
Okay.
Can we get some, we've got a busy meeting on the 4th.
That's a busy night.
Yeah, let's go, I make a recommendation that we go to the 18th, plus then we can get some engineering comments.
Chris isn't going to be here either, so I'd like to see him here, the 18th.
Okay, yeah, the 18th.
All right, so motion to continue, the public hearing, tape early 18th.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Hey, folks, just one last thing before you, before you go, remember, you're all going to go home and say, I should have asked that question. Write it down.
Email it to Annie.
Email all your questions, even if you asked them tonight, okay? You can put that right in there, put your concerns, your comments, and questions, including like the water, everything you've got, let's have it, because we're going to review them, we're going to send them out for review, and we're going to bring them up in here. Also, on the 18th, come on in, okay? And thank you all for coming, this is great, this is a great crowd, and we're going to learn a lot ourselves about the land out there, thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Yes, they will be, yes.
Can come in for you, sure. Oh, and also remember, your public officials work for you.
Next time, media, we're voting the change, so this can't happen.
That's awesome. You know, I know, I know they need all the requirements, but we don't have to prove that. So, that's a project that's a bit of a...
That's like a reverse management. I mean, this, this lot is so bad, I mean, that's there, because they had to make...
Six.
Six, five, you know, I understand they're going to build it, and that I understand, but it's kind of a nice way to...
I mean, you know the infiltrators, huh? You get that.
And I know, I know, I think I'm telling myself, I need to work there, and that's why I come meeting me.
Yeah, because when I live across, when I...
And Garrett, this guy, and the old man lives there, and I bought my house, and he does well, so that would be...
So, I'd say, what, I'd say, what zone is this?
They're going to have a water problem. They're going to have a water problem.
And then, not to mention, everything, as soon as you dig that, people will see it, just like being downtown.
Well, then it's aquifer. Right. That's like your vacuum microwave, it's all same.
All same. Well, anyhow, thanks for answering my questions.
Good to see you.
Nice to meet you.
Tell the family I said hi.
Yeah, we're definitely.
So, Annie, what zone is this aquifer? It's not zone aquifer?
Correct.
Not two or three?
They can't, so wherever this property line is, and then we just...
Hey, excuse me, folks, just so you know, we are going to close out the meeting here with a few more items, so...
If you guys want to, can you talk outside, if you don't mind? Thank you. We still have more business to do. All right, continuing on, public hearing, bylaw change, continue, Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, consider amendments in additions to the zoning bylaw, amend section, excuse, folks?
Excuse me, folks?
Excuse me.
Folks?
Hello?
Excuse me, folks?
We're still got a meeting going here?
Excuse me.
Want to hang around?
No, folks, we're trying to continue the meeting here.
Thank you. Okay, continuing on, amend section 50-8.2A, delete and replace the definition of lot regularity, amend section 50.8.2C, delete and replace the defend, definition of street line, amend section 50.2.1, add the definition of building inspector, amend section 50-2.1, add the definition of farm nonexempt. Okay, board?
Um, sorry, do you mind if I, Chairman?
Go ahead, you've got the floor.
Um, so, per our conversation at the last meeting, I put together this, what the board requested, looking at an existing subdivision and testing it against our new, or the proposed calculations. I apologize, I only have a digital copy, the printer would not cooperate with me, and IT was already gone for the day. Yes.
What subdivision is that, Annie?
I don't, I don't think it's fair to the subdivision to use the name, because that's, I don't want to give the bad perception of the subdivision. The board just asked for, you know, a subdivision-looking property, and that's what this is.
I know which one it is.
Yeah, I, it's a recent one.
I saw the smile from Wally.
But, I just, I don't think it's, you know, we wanted a blank subdivision, this is a blank subdivision.
Right, so, can you explain the dash there, is the back there?
So, what, this?
All right.
This one?
Yeah.
So, that is just the drainage easement from this existing subdivision that Adobe wouldn't let me delete, so please disregard. So, the lot line for these two goes right through here, but again, I was fighting with Adobe, and it wouldn't even...
Where's it go from? Same, same lot, just different dimensions?
Nope, it's the same exact lot that you saw, I just tested the new calculation against these existing lots, and with the new, um...
Lot six.
Lot six becomes the issue, this would not be considered a buildable lot.
Okay, so that answers my question.
Yep, and again, apologies for not getting it printed out. I'll figure it out.
So, let me, so, here's the problem I have, Wally.
Yeah.
That isn't a rat tail, that's not what we're trying to delete, right?
Right.
And area in frontage, I don't see what's wrong with that lot, a driveway in, you got plenty...
Plenty in the back.
Plenty in the back, even if you applied your circle.
Yeah.
Of yesteryear.
Yeah, we've got to, we've got to clarify that circle, because we found a big problem with it.
Of yesteryear, but, so that's, that's the issue that I have moving forward, when we test this.
I will say, I provided you at the last meeting with a lot of examples of rat tails, and this equation got rid of all of them.
It did, but it also gets rid of a, it also gets rid of a lot that may be viable.
Well, I also think we need to keep in mind that no calculation we use is going to be the perfect, that's going to be, you know, allow every single perfect lot, there's always going to be an exclusion that will fall outside any calculation.
So, is that a lot that comes to the zoning board with, for zoning board relief, because of a hardship?
Annie, in lot six, how wide is that? If that, straight away, coming off.
She's saying no.
I, I would have to pull up the full set of plans, and I don't...
Rough guess, greater than 50 feet, what is it, looks like 100 feet, something like that?
Um, hold on, let me pull up, I left the scale on it.
You see what I'm saying?
Oops, too much.
I do, and there's, there's a way around that, but...
What's the way around it?
Well, I'm going to see, that's why I'm asking what the dimensions are.
Guess about 100, no, that doesn't make sense, hold on.
This is the stuff we want to...
About 150 feet.
So, that's 150 feet wide.
From here to here, that's what you're asking? Okay, yeah.
And the CBA, is that in the back, or is that in the front?
This doesn't show the calculation for contiguous buildable area.
So, where is the buildable area on that lot? Is it in the front or the back?
Knowing the lot, this is all wetlands, so the buildable will be up front.
That's the answer. So, um, so the buildable area in the front in lot six is tremendously sized. Okay, to meet the reg, that line goes across somewhere on that lot, probably where it is, and goes in, and that's the buildable area to where the calculation goes.
All right, let me ask you this, what if it wasn't wet?
Then it can go anywhere you want back there.
But, they, they have to seek zoning relief, and Annie shaking her head, no, they can't.
No, that's not what I'm...
Why would you get...
Well, they wouldn't get zoning, there wouldn't be grounds for them to get zoning relief.
Not under hardship?
Well...
I think that would fall under a hardship.
What would be, for the zoning board?
Okay, hold on a second.
How topography, wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to meet the topography threshold?
It, one thing you got to keep in mind, this isn't existing now, I don't know if you can do it, Annie, later, but what I wanted to see was just like this thing here with a blank lot, don't go over the lots that are drawn, but take a, take, like, take this parcel, add that calculation, what does it look like? Not troubleshoot it backwards.
Oh, I think one and six, I think one and two are gone, or six...
I see everything but lot four gone, okay? But, that doesn't mean that they can't be redesigned to meet it, I see a four-lot subdivision here pretty easy, okay? But, that's what I'm looking at, so we're looking at this from a existing lot basis, what if we're just looking at a parcel, like, this parcel, as, as an example?
Well, so, based on this calculation, it would require, the way the math works is that it would essentially be a square, is what this equation is setting it against, so it would just be a street with a square, a square, a square, a square, a square.
Okay, so take example A here, okay, just a lot, no lines, no road, no nothing, design it with that reg, what's it look like? Not, because we're back, we're doing this backwards, so we're taking existing to see it was formed, which would fall under what you're asking about, it's a pre-existing nonconformant, so it's covered, so there wouldn't be zoning relief on that, but we're going about this from a brand-new plain sheet of paper.
I agree with you, 100% on that.
Yeah.
A brand-new blank sheet of paper coming in with that...
That's what we got to go, but if you've got a pre-existing nonconfling lot, you're, you're covered.
A and Rs.
Yeah. Yeah.
A and Rs that are tricky, A and Rs that we want to get rid of the rat tails on.
You mean, wait a minute, A, well, an A and R still has to meet the standard adequate access from your, from your front, and 150-foot wide, okay?
And we're going to add one more, we're going to add that formula in there, too.
Right, so that's, that should still be it, but again, that's a clean sheet of paper, okay? Even if you have to go single-lot subdivision on that to meet that compliance, just, we do that a lot.
And I'll say this, I'm okay, I'm all right, because I have to explain this, you know, it's our meeting.
Yeah.
This is, I have to approve it, right? So, the caveat would be to try it through this one year, and if we, if something happens where it doesn't meet the test, I think it can come back up for a warrant article for the next town meeting.
Well, the zoning, the zoning, well, the planning board regulations are, you can do that at a hearing, any hearing, but the zoning stuff, okay, it's still all living document, that's, that's the way we designed it, okay, this isn't etched in stone, because you know what? I'm telling you, in, in the early, mid-'90s, when we first came up with this new subdivision plan, that was the first in Groveland in 30 years, and I might add the first in the Commonwealth.
I had here then.
But, we thought it was the greatest piece of legislation written, and it didn't take four years for somebody to come in and find a hole in that, so we, we plugged the holes as we go, these are living documents, yeah, so if we have to make a change, make a change.
I think when we go to town meeting, there's no plugging holes as we go, I think you got to go back, am I correct, Annie? If it doesn't meet...
We, the only way zoning bylaws can be changed is through town meeting, Wally's referring to the subdivision rules and regulations that can be changed at a public hearing that is noticed in the newspaper, it's different things.
Totally different than what we're doing now.
Right, right, so that's what I was referring to, so...
But, again, you know, I mean, I'll go back to that. But again, you know, I mean, I'll go back to that. If the new calculation fixes more lots than the old one we had-
I'm good with that.
Then it's a win-win. I mean, I, I don't think there's, we're going to be able to find anything that's going to make it, that every single lot we think should be allowed will be allowed, because I don't think any calculation is going to be that fine-tuned.
No, I'm, I'm in agreement with this, I mean-
Can I say that for 25 years, we didn't see those here, because we put those other regs in?
Right.
And there's a big misconception with that circle that Annie and I found that she was going to look, did you find an old plan with the, with the old circle in it?
No, I haven't had time.
Okay, so we're going to be, we're going to be looking at that. But you can put this in, okay, but again, the rat tails came when that reg was changed.
Right.
There's a reason why we put it in. But the circle that you're seeing on these lots, since we're in the subject matter now, these are wrong. Okay? The circle was only 100-foot wide, not 120-feet wide. I don't know who came up with that, but that was not the original regulation.
But it's still, your circle, it complies, and, and the problem with the circle is you still get those rat tails, that's why-
Okay, wait, wait, wait. The circle, just to be clear what the circle was, it was a 100-foot wide circle to be contained within the CBA, which I believe was the 1995 change?
So, this is what we were talking about the other day, you're using contiguous buildable area in a different way than the bylaws read contiguous buildable area.
No, I'm saying the circle has to be contained in the contiguous buildability, not what the calculation is for the contiguous buildability. The CBA has got a, it's got a calculation by the whole lot. But this circle-
I understand.
Right, let me finish.
Okay.
Okay, this circle, when I wrote this, and we submitted it, and we got approved from town meeting, I believe in '95, okay, was 100, 100-foot diameter circle.
Those are 120, 100 would still fall in there.
No, 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 listen, okay, you got to understand why that was there, never mind anything else. The CBA was one calculation. Okay, you have a lot that comes into here, you got your setbacks, okay, that come into here. The 100-foot diameter circle must fit in within the setbacks, right? So if you got 15 on this side, you got 15 on this side, okay, that's 30. The 120 feet is a different regulation, I believe that was 303.5. So the, what that was, there you go, you check that number, anyway.
I believe you're right, Wally.
So what that was, is that you had 150-foot frontage required, and you could not narrow the lot down any further than 80% of the required frontage, hence the 120 feet. There was never a circle with that, ever, ever. Okay, somehow that got, we got to change that back, okay, to get, make sure it's clear. So that's what that is, this is an 80% calculation, not a circle. It was a 100-foot diameter circle, which must be located within the CBA. So, when you put your house, you got your house. You want to put a pool in your front yard, doesn't matter. You want to put your garage up, anywhere, because you didn't require anything but a building permit, you don't need a variance, you don't need setbacks, you're all within it. And so that was a landing zone for whatever the homeowner wanted to do, who comes in the future. Hey, I put my house up, I want to put my pool up, I want to put a shed up, I want to put a garage up. If it's anywhere in that circle, it flies, and that's why we came up with that. Somehow, the circle got misinterpreted from a 100-foot diameter circle within the setbacks, and it somehow got transformed to a 120-foot circle, which never existed.
All right, so if you look at Lot 4, you've got your, let's say the circle's there.
Yeah, Lot 4 is probably the only one that looks good.
So that's why I'm using it, that's why we're going to use it. So, outside of that circle, if I want to put the pool towards the back-
If it's, it doesn't matter.
It makes a setback.
It, that's fine. If it, long as it makes the setback, you're fine.
Technically, if it makes a setback, we don't need the circle anymore, especially the way that Annie-
It was a design, it was a design thing to show that these lots didn't narrow out like this, which is, because you had to do it anywhere in the lot, see? So if you had a 100-foot diameter circle right here, would it fit on this lot? No, that's what prevented the diameters from going like this. When this stuff was pulled out, that's where these rat tails came back. We didn't have them for 25 years because of that regulation. Okay? And then we went to the 80% calculation of the frontage, so you couldn't narrow the lot any further down, that's what that was for, but it was never a circle.
I'm going to propose that we go with the calculation that Annie did, because it works, it works as well.
Oh, I know, I don't disagree that it, it doesn't work, but I also want to put back, as, as they said in the famous movie-
I don't think we have to go back, I don't think we have to go back.
Put the candle back, on, on the 100-foot diameter circle for what it was used for, not for the area calculation.
But coming in with a clean sheet of paper-
Right.
As long as you meet the calculation that's we're proposing-
Mm-hmm.
You will not need the circle, at all.
Are there any of the setbacks, because this lot had some setback issues?
That is already gone.
No, but, I'm asking the question, if we had this calculation in effect two years ago, the additionals within the setbacks, where would they be?
I don't think I understand, what, what you mean?
Did that, did this lot have a 100-foot diameter circle or 120?
120.
Okay, so even the 120 circle, which was an 80% calculation coming down the lot, okay, did the 100-foot diameter circle, which is what it was originally, was in there for, did it fit in there within the setbacks, or did it encroach on the setbacks?
I would have to go back and look at the set of plans.
Okay, that's what I want to find out. But can you draw up on, on, pick a, pick any clean lot in town that, that for four, five, six-lot subdivision, and apply this calculation, and see what it looks like? Because that's going backwards, and I like that, but I think we need the other side, too. We need to see, if somebody comes in with a brand-spanking-new plan, what's it going to look like? Or what should we expect it to look like?
Let's, let's move this along, but I think for now-
Yeah.
What we have on the proposal for the town warrant-
Yeah, I think we already agreed last week, that was good to go.
I believe that's going to make every lot clean moving forward.
Yeah, we talked about that, right. But then we have, and then, we'll bring it up after the vote, because then we have a separate issue we have to-
We'll continue that issue.
Okay.
We just want to be on the warrant for now.
Yeah, yeah, we already agreed with that, Les, Les, so, motion of-
We already motioned, put this on the warrant at the last meeting. We already did that at the last meeting.
All right, so the public hearing is for public comment.
Susan, on Zoom, did you have any questions about this?
Well, not, not for these, but we need your help to get some clarity on some texts.
Susan?
Oh, sorry, well, you were talking to me.
Sorry, did you have any questions? We could just hear some background noise.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
Okay, we just wanted to make sure you had all your questions answered, if you had any.
Yeah, I, I just got in at the tail end of it, so I missed a lot, but that's okay, I'll make it up later.
Okay, and if you have any questions, just shoot me an email, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so long.
Have a nice night.
So-
Okay.
Thanks, Susan. So the, on tonight's here for the public hearing of this, we already voted to put it on the warrant.
Correct.
So what's-
But you wanted to continue conversation about it.
Well, conversation, yes. So we already voted to throw it on.
Yep.
We've got that.
Yep.
We got-
You gave me a list of things that you want to see next time, so-
Yeah, so nothing, I think nothing else is needed, so we can just move off of this.
No, not for, yeah, well, we can cover up with that later. But we're going to have to, these are good things to know for the town meeting, because we're going to get these questions, just like we did in here.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, and I think it's great that we can print some stuff out, little handouts or something like that. Okay.
All right, so next up is 895 Salem Street.
So do we want a motion to continue this to the next meeting, is that-
No, I, I think we're done with it.
I think we're done with that.
Will it fully close?
Wally's, this is fully closed.
Yeah, fully closed, it'll be planning board discussion only.
So, Wally, will you fly a motion to close-
Yeah.
The public hearing on the bylaw change?
Correct.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we'll have planning board discussion later.
Sometime in May.
Right.
Yeah, anytime, doesn't matter.
Okay. Next up, 895 Salem Street, request for a bond reduction. I think if we look in our packets, TEC has made a recommendation.
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward. They're almost complete with their stormwater, the site, because of the time of year they're requesting it, it's not fully stabilized with vegetation yet, but again, most of their stormwater is in place, everything's to bind, as far as paving, curbing is in.
895 is what?
Baldini and Daniels.
Oh, okay.
Yep, they're making great progress.
Yeah, I saw it, it looks pretty nice.
Yeah, it looks good.
They should be done soon. TEC had no, I mean, you, you have the letter, they've been running a clean site, so.
Yeah, fly a motion to reduce it to 25, as recommended?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Bond is reduced. Okay. Updates and discussions?
Again, the signatures for the registry of deeds, which you guys have all done, I'm just waiting on John Stokes on that, but I just keep it on here just in case.
Okay.
Okay, next up is meeting minutes, approval of much, 7th, 2023 meeting minutes, fly a motion?
I did.
Okay.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Town planner update?
Um, one thing, I have finalized the, um, the site plan review for the cell tower lot, so just signatures on this. I went over it with the applicants, um, and they're all set with it, so just need this all set.
Motion to endorse?
Yeah, you, I think just signing it will suffice, because we motioned to approve it, we closed everything out, we just need the signatures, and since I have you all here-
You've got the official.
Oh, it's right here, yep. Um, oh, sorry, oh, you have one, okay. So while you are doing that, um, as some of you know, because not all of you were on the board at the time when this happened, we were in court with the owner of 301 Main So I only got this information about an hour before the meeting starts, started, so I have answers to none of your questions. I want to preface by saying that. All I'm looking to do is just, we need to schedule a meeting date, because the court remanded the matter to the planning board with the directions to review the record, conduct any further proceeding, and issue a new decision that is fully, that fully complies with MGL Chapter 40, Section 9, within 60 days. So, to do this, we need to go through the traditional public hearing process, so noticing two times in the newspaper, sending out a battery notifications, and so, again, there is that 60-day time limit.
So, I'm sorry, so what's the request?
Request is to bring it back to the planning board.
So the-
But, but, but what's, what stage of 301, there was like 60 days?
So, so the, the court decision in the whole case was surrounding start, the application of star construction. So the planning board denied that it was brought to court, and the court has remanded that we have to review it again, because it did not find our decision sound. Again, I have had no time to review this.
Go gas station?
Sorry?
Yeah, 301 Main, it's the least place.
So they want us to redo the traffic part of it?
No, so we have to fully redo the public hearing. So, so again, we have to issue it in the paper two times-
Yeah.
Send out a battery notifications-
Then what?
And then redo the hearing.
And just the hearing.
And reissue a new decision.
So, Wally, I believe that, uh, town council's reading it as well as Annie.
Yep, yeah.
It's a 100-page document.
It, it's a big document, we have to go through and look at everything again, but what needs to be ironed out now, so it was good timing that we had the meeting tonight, is that we have to have a new public hearing for this. The earliest we could do it is April 11th, which is the second week, which is not our normal, so obviously we do the first and third.
Throw it on the 18th.
I agree.
I get worried about that, simply because we only have 60 days to issue a new decision, and I do not believe that this, we would be able to-
So we can ask for an extension.
With the courts?
Yeah.
Good luck.
I get, I get really worried about that, I'll be honest.
But, I mean, are you all right with, uh-
No, not for the 11th, but I'd rather have it on a regular meeting, a regular meeting night, and if we're going to go through the whole, the whole, we have to see what the court ordered, put back.
Right, I, I 100% agree.
And we should get some input first on this, so let's, let's just set a date, let's put the 18th on, that's far enough time out, that's only three weeks. Okay, and if we have to do the whole hearing process and bring all the other board members up to date on this thing, um, that's, that's going to take some time, and then we have the engineers that'll come back in, and then we're still, were a couple of issues that the Mass, State of Mass didn't address.
The curb cut.
So, the curb cut and the traffic access, and what they were going to do with the traffic lights, and the fact that the bridge is in the wrong spot.
Pedestrian walkways.
Got it, so all that stuff had to be, we handed it off to the state, and we didn't hear back. I, I mean-
Has the state commented in all this time?
I am not aware, I don't know, but I know that one of the issues that was ongoing through the case was that we do not have jurisdiction over the curb cut, so we cannot make decisions regarding that.
So then, so then we have to send it back to the state, who does make the determination on the curb cut.
But we, I mean, we can say that they need to get proper permitting through the state, but the planning board, we have no jurisdiction over that.
All right, so, so what we asked them to-
But again, we need, we need council to, we need council to go over it first.
Basically, the Commonwealth, we asked them for that input, they didn't give us the input, okay, so we can make a decision and hand it back over to the Commonwealth, but then the Commonwealth has to, has to comply, so town council should be sending them a letter on this, to make sure that they can comply.
This is a town council, this is, um-
No, 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 it, if council's working in on this, okay, they need to send the Commonwealth a letter with this decision, that they have to make a decision within 60 days.
I think, Annie, that's a good question for Mead. Lisa Mead and Adam Koster's got this.
Yeah, Lisa should know.
Yeah, and, and I mean, I think we need to, if we're going to ask that question, and if it's cutting into our court-mandated turnaround time, I think we need to be-
And if it's not, something that the-
I think we need to be very clear, is if we have an extension based on our question, or if we need to action quickly based on our court-mandated turnaround time.
Yeah, we can't be responsible for the Commonwealth not, not answering within a limited amount of time. We can issue our decision and then say, say we never got back from the-
Be responsible for the Commonwealth, not answering within a limited amount of time. We can issue our decision and then say we never got back from the Commonwealth. But we've been, we've been waiting for them, and they've refused to come in and right, before. They weren't going to make a decision on it.
So the question I would have for the town council, or our council, would be, do we have the legal right to weigh the decision on the traffic implication?
Say that one more time, Brad.
So the, the question I would have for our council would be, do we have legal standing for traffic implications on the site? And DOT, curb cut. If the court says they don't feel we do, and this site hinges on.
Two state highways.
Two state highways and the safety of pass and repass through that site, and us as a board taking it as a safety concern, we should know what our legal standing is in the process, don't you agree? Because that was what we hinged our decision around before.
First thing, because they didn't respond. And they couldn't get them to respond.
Well, if I remember correctly, they wanted an answer that night.
Yeah, but we've been trying, we were trying to get input from the state on this, but that's.
She's not probably going to get.
The planning board, if the planning board here, if we don't buy the court order from what you just said, and again, we don't have that in front of us, if the planning board doesn't have the authority to deny something over a curb cut, then the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has to come forward with, within that timeframe, with a yay or a nay on giving that curb cut, and if they don't, then our decision has to state, this is approved based upon approval with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and hand it off to them, because we don't have the jurisdiction to make that.
So the court.
So then the applicant's going to have to fight the Commonwealth, which we were trying to do for a year, and get a decision out of them. And it's going to be a very interesting one with two state highways coming together and a bridge in the wrong.
If we make them do a traffic study?
Well, traffic study we need, and we can do it.
You know, you're not going to do that in sixty days.
See, I don't, I don't think that, well, it depends. If we, sixty days from the date of decision, sixty days from the date of the hearing.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Sixty days starting Friday.
Right.
Last Friday.
So the board has got, you got to do, redo the traffic study.
I think we need some parameters around the sixty-day timeframe about, like, do we need to schedule everything as soon as, and we need to start running through our motions?
We need to issue a decision sixty days from the seventeenth.
What happens if we don't issue the decision within sixty days?
Then it's constructively approved.
But then he still has to go through the state on the curb cut.
So let's get the first meeting scheduled.
So the eighteenth. So, but we have to notify the applicant, we need an updated traffic study. And we need Massachusetts input on that cut, so force him to go there. And he can send in that court decision and.
Yeah, state of Mass, Wally, may or may not, I wouldn't hinge our decision on that.
No, 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 but we don't have the authority to make the curb cut.
What happens if he doesn't meet? What happens if he doesn't meet the sixty days on the traffic study?
Right. Well, that's a problem. We need a traffic study. Well, you got to call them now and say, get that traffic study done. They can do that right away.
Right, so I think what we need, what we would need to do is base our decision on whatever is there now, right?
I think everything on that was, was all hinging. Everything else can go as is, but the only thing that we were doing on that was the traffic study and input from DOT that we couldn't get.
So my question is, if we have a sixty-day decision to make, what happens if they can't comply with it if we ask for a traffic study?
Well, that's where, that's where Lisa's going to have to come in and, you know, request an extension of the court based upon the data required, because that, you know, even if we had one, it's so old, and the traffic has increased, so we need that.
I don't think, Rebecca, I don't think you were there. I don't think.
Yeah, she was there on a couple of.
There was a traffic study, was there?
Yeah, but it's got to be updated, and then, I mean, that's the hinge point. And Lisa can fire back, here's the decision approved, but we have no control over the Commonwealth and DOT, and it is up to them to issue the curb cut and whether they're going to move the bridge, you know, that anchor point and/or add lights on two intersecting state highways in a very high-density traffic area. So and then, so it's approved based upon that. If they don't meet that sixty-day timeline with the Commonwealth, then the applicant still has to go chase that.
We still need to get legal counsel to weigh in on exactly what that sixty-day timeframe looks like.
Yes.
Sixty days to open a remand hearing?
That's what I'm thinking.
Excuse me, can you have a microphone?
Sorry.
Can you use yourself, please?
Rebecca Oldham, town administrator. So is it based upon, when does the sixty days start? So we still need legal counsel to weigh in on all of those different parameters in order to give us a better understanding of how we need to move forward. However, I think that the urgency is definitely there, and efforts to do our due diligence and to advertise and to have the applicant come back before the board and open up those conversations, and also have legal presence during all of those proceedings, so that we can ensure that we're following the court's remand decision as well as acting in the best interest of the town. Because there's nothing that states that we need to approve the application, but the way in which we denied the application was not under, was not done correctly under Chapter forty-eight, Section nine. And so our denial did not meet those requirements, and therefore, that's why they issued their remand. So it is really up to the board now to then open up the proceedings again and listen and to make a decision that is in line with those regulations, so that whether or not it's approved or denied, it has standing in the court of law.
So which part wasn't, do you know? And we can discuss this later if it has to go exec session.
It's mostly surrounding the curb cut. I think that the curb cut, like you'd mentioned before, is a really big component of this because of the fact that there's only one exit in and out. It's very small, it's very dangerous, it goes right into the intersection. But ultimately, the board has no authority over that curb cut. And so we could mandate that he change it, but Mass DOT could say no. And we can't condition our approval on another authority's ability to approve or deny.
We can only, we can only vote on what's there.
So then the applicant needs to get that approval on the curb cut from the Commonwealth itself and bring it in.
So that is also not allowable. And that's also where there's that area where we need to be very careful about how we approach this particular project and when we discuss it. So it's not to say that we can't bring those concerns up. It's not to make sure that those concerns are adequately noted, but any approval or denial needs to be in accordance with our bylaws as written in Massachusetts general law. And how that's done, we'll need to have legal counsel present to help guide us through that process and make that determination.
Okay, can we get a short brief from council on one or two pages as to?
That's what Annie's working on.
Okay, thank you.
We just got the decision on Friday, so we had just had an initial meeting with town council the other day. So they are reviewing all of the information, all of the original application, et cetera, and I know Annie, in preparation of this meeting, is starting to put something together herself as well. So that will be available to you, and as we mentioned, once we're able to solidify that date and make sure that everyone is able, or we have a quorum, we'll be able to have town council there. And whether or not an executive session is necessary, I don't believe it would be, but we can have that conversation in either an executive session, an open session, whatever's warranted based upon the.
If we, if we get the briefing, we won't need exec session, yeah.
That's also a possibility.
That doesn't fall under Mass general law?
Well, because we don't own the road. It's a state highway.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
The safety concerns of pass and repass into that site, that doesn't fall under our jurisdiction whatsoever.
We don't have any control over it.
Right, it's a state highway.
Yeah, but the site itself has to have an entry and an exit.
I completely agree with you, and I don't remember exactly why the Commonwealth refused or delayed for a year on getting back to us, but if council, it's actually, I think it's going to come from the applicant to present that case and zap it over to the DOT and say, hey, you've got sixty days to give me a curb cut approval.
We, I guess not.
Yeah, that was, that's definitely.
Not us, not us, the applicant.
That's definitely something that is not within our jurisdiction. Mass DOT on multiple occasions got back to, whether it be the zoning board of appeals or the planning board in this entire process, and has repeatedly said, once the board approves whatever use per their zoning bylaw or per their regulations, they would then consider whatever improvements and/or use of that curb cut in relation to their parameters. So it had nothing, they kept on.
So you can have an approval, but not an access approval, because it still needs state approval. So we give ours, state's still got to give theirs.
So we need to give our, our decision based on the way it's laid out at this moment.
So what if, okay, so if we give a decision, and it goes out for the curb cut, and the curb gets denied, what happens? If we, let's say just hypothetically it's approved.
I'm not a hundred percent positive. I mean, I think that it's kind of like, you know, conservation, they approve wetlands. Planning board, they approve the site. So what happens when the planning board approves the site and the conservation commission denies the NOI? The same or vice versa. So you need all of your permits in order to proceed with a building permit or occupancy. So whether it be the planning board that says, yes, you're good to go, and they go before Mass DOT, and Mass DOT says, no, you can't use that curb cut, then regardless of your, your approval, he doesn't have the rights to occupy that building because he doesn't have all of his proper approvals.
Okay, so that's going to be listed, if it does get approved, that's going to be listed as to requirements needed.
Counsel coming in.
Right. I think it would be best to wait for legal counsel to weigh in on any additional questions that you have, but it's certainly something that we're being very careful and acknowledge that we want to proceed as we are required to do so, and I think that's why Annie had mentioned trying to get that scheduled, so that we can make sure we meet that deadline of at least initiating the conversation as required.
Okay.
I think we can do this on the eighteenth.
Yeah, me too.
Eighteenth.
I don't think we need.
That'll give us time for a brief, absorb it, go. Is that enough time to advertise, though? That's fifteen days. He's right there, right? Yeah, pretty close. No, he's going to have fifteen days, so yes. So.
And that gives enough time for the council to read and.
Yeah, they'll be going. Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
That's it? Motion adjourned?
Motion adjourned.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closing the meeting at eight thirty-seven.
Roger that. Good night. Thank you for watching.